Meeting of September eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, under Commission Business, approval of the August invoices. Need a motion?
So moved.
I got a motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Second.
A second by Mr. Smith.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. For the record, it looks like we are short Brad Green and Mary Singer, but my understanding is Brad Green will be your short. Approval of the August eleventh minutes, there is one change that I noticed. Under the last application, PDP two thousand and twenty-two dash forty, it says there's a motion by Mrs. Singer and the second by Mr. Vest to approve the preliminary development plan, but it goes on to say, last couple sentences, no action taken due to a tie. The Vice Chairman Mifflin voted for and Commissioner Shirley Green and Vest voted against. So Vest seconded the motions approved. If we need to change that name from Vest to Stone. It was Shirley, Green and Stone who voted against and it's Mrs. Singer, Mr. Mifflin and Mr. Vest who voted for. And I did make the change, Shirley, on the minutes that I'll send down.
Alright, good.
So with that change, is there any other changes, comments of the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shirley.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Stone, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, was it? Alright, Mr. Smith, second to that motion against, motion carries. Approval of the September eighth agenda. There is a change, we've got, well, there's no change right now, I guess we'll go, look, it'll be postponed and that. So other than that, there's no other changes. Does anybody have, I need, I guess, a motion to approve the agenda. And I'll go over postpone this here in a second. So we got a motion by Mr. Stone.
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrett, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Items for postponement or withdrawal, we have one that's postponed, PDP two thousand and twenty-two dash forty, Living Waters Fellowship Edition, Preliminary Development Plan to construct a two, two, three thousand square foot buildings for a total of six thousand square foot for a proposed daycare and drive, and daycare and school and driveway located at one seven Two Gunnel Road. So that's the only postponement. Any other postponements, Joe?
Nope, that's it.
So those are the only, so I need just a motion, I guess, to accept that postponement.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Vest, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll write, we're gonna jump right down into new business, under consent agendas, because we have, pretty much, I think, all of them are consent eligible. FSP two thousand and twenty-two dash forty-one, the Richards property, it's a final subdivision plat to subdivide one five acre tract, leaving a remainder of fifteen acres located at two fifty-five Galloway Road. Is there anybody here who is against this application? Or wants to hear it, I guess? Against it or wants to hear it? Guess we'll do each, again, individually. So with that being said, it's eligible for consent, I need a motion.
So moved.
So I got a motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Sure.
Second by Mr. Vest, we'll do a roll call as I've been asked to do. Mr. Shirley.
Aye.
Mr. Vest.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Brad Green's absent. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Mifflin.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, so motion is passed. So if you're here for the Richards farm, you can come up to our attorney and sign the appropriate paperwork. Next on the consent agenda is PDP two thousand and twenty-two dash forty-two, the Osir Paint Edition, Preliminary Development Plan for a three thousand square foot warehouse building for product storage located at one hundred track site. Is there anybody here that's against or would like to hear this application? Alright, with that being said, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Vest.
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrett. Again, we will do a roll call. Absent. Brett Shirley.
Yes.
Mr. Mifflin.
Yes.
Mr. Vest.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Brad Green's absent. Dan, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, if you're here for the Osir application, please come up and sign the documents with Mr. Perkins, our attorney. And then next one on the consent agenda is PDP dash two thousand and twenty-two dash forty-three, the Deering Development, Preliminary Development Plan for a thirty-two hundred square foot shop building located at nine hundred East Main Street Extended. Again, this is consent eligible, is there anybody here who is against it or would like to hear it tonight? With that being said, I will entertain a motion.
Moved.
A motion by Mr. Garrett to approve a consent and second it by Mr. Vest. Again, we'll do a roll call, Mr. Mifflin.
Yes.
Mr. Vest.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Shirley.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, if you're here representing the Deering Development, please come up and sign.
If, if we could, just note it on the record.
So on the record for the...
Yeah, that either owner is present to sign that the engineer...
For Mr. Osir and the Deering Development. So for the record, the Osir Paint Edition, PDP two thousand and twenty-two dash forty-two and PDP dash two thousand and twenty-two dash forty-three, the Deering Development will be signed by the engineer.
But, no, he's taking it two.
Or he's gonna take him two on the sign.
Yeah, two of them and then they will turn one of them back and then one they keep. They'll see them Baker.
Yes, and your name, sir, for the record?
Steve Baker.
Steve Baker with Midwest Engineering. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we adjourn. Look at Brad. Brad, if you pay attention, I make a motion to adjourn.
Make, make the motion to adjourn.
So, last thing on the agenda, surprisingly, Brad, is presentation on buffers adjoining agricultural lands by Scott County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Yeah, I guess, I'd like to introduce Debbie Osborne, and Keith, and Keith Tingle. They, I, I kinda brought, they've developed some recommendations that come out of the conference of plan, kind of review of rural land use. I brought the recommendation, all the recommendations to you a couple months ago and we discussed them. They wanna make a presentation of some, some of those same recommendations, but they have a PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you. Again, for the record, just state your name.
Keith Tingle, and I'm Chairman of the District, and Debbie Osborne is Secretary for the District. So with that in mind, we just wanna bring up a few concerns that the farmers have basically brought to us. We've been talking to the County Judge, and Judge Condon said, the best thing to do is bring them back to you all, let you take a look at them and see how our expansion is impacting our local farmers. And that's what we're willing to do and try to see if there's some ordinances that can be put in place that will protect farming operations as well as those people who are buying homes here in the county. So with that in mind, Deputy Knessman, if you don't have information on Scott County Soil Conservation, we are an elected board. We are the least known because most of the time, we either have a three open spot or a four open spot, and if there's only four people or three people who fill those spots, it never becomes on the ballot, so nobody knows we exist. But we came out of Dust Bowl, Congress and President's time, saw the need to come back in with a way to protect farmland. At that time, of course, from all the enrolling that was taking place, and as they used to say, the dust from Oklahoma could be seen in Washington DC and New York City on any given day. Also, water protection, Elkhorn District, as well as Eagle and the other water districts around here. So we try to promote with our farmers wise, what they call best practices. But from that, we, repeat again, Debbie, are set up under federal government for the states to have one in every county. We work on the offices of the State of Kentucky, and we are funded through, basically, through fiscal court. So that's where we get our funding to do the work that we do. We are basically, and it was originally just set up for farmers, matter of fact, the farmer had to be the one who initiated the initial setup of the board back in forty-one when we were established. From that point on, as Scott County has developed, and especially in the last six years that I've been on the board, as we have shifted to be the fastest growing county in the state, part of our resources and so forth have shifted also from rural to urban as well. Some of the things that we have instigated in the last year, we've got a rain barrel project coming up for conservation water for urban areas, urban gardens. We're doing a cover crop project, not only for our farmers this year, but also giving away free cover crop for the urban gardeners to help with that. Also, we used to give away trees years ago. Don't do that anymore because most of those trees ended up dead and not planted. So now, as city ordinance calls for, we need to have a tree in every yard, we're willing to go fifty percent up to a hundred dollars on purchases and planting of trees now to help them. And then we continue on with things like dead animal removal and other things that go to our farmers. So with that in mind, we're coming now to the point of, A, looking at population growth and then, and you know the statistics, this is part of your all's numbers, that you all have seen, max is growing, we've already doubled, and it's possibly doubling again in another ten to twenty years. So we have a lot of urban pressure, but, continue on Debbie, with the US or Urban Service District or boundary going out, it's putting pressure on more and more farmland, both within that boundary and outside that boundary, and we're trying to provide a form of protection for them. Hit me again. If you notice the figures, farming is a business in this county. Fifty-one million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in two thousand and seventeen from the sale of farm products, basically livestock and/or grains in the county. So we're nothing small. Most people are removed from the farm now. I think nationally, there's like one point four percent of the US population is feeding all the rest of the US population plus the world. And so there's an urgency going, and some people will say that by two thousand and fifty, there might not be enough land out there to even feed the world anymore, because not all the land that's available is farmable. Also, if you look at, just be pat ourselves on the back, Scott County is thirty-ninth of a hundred and twenty counties, in the amount of income produced off the farm. So, there you hear again. Here's why we're here. The farmers have come to us over the last couple of years concerned about the effects of the growth on the farm. The ordinances coming out of this board or Commission and others primarily govern the developer, right, and land use coming out of the developer, right? Also, there's not been much that has come out of this board or any other that turns around and protects the farmer. And every time a new subdivision goes in, there's an impact on the farmer next door. So we are here to protect them and go back to the profit business, protect their financial operation. Debbie, continue please. Some of the things they have asked for is, one, is no sign boundary. That gate right there is probably set at about four and a half foot to five foot tall, and you see what's laying over it. That can be common. The generalist of livestock, if spooked, will panic. And if that cow is leaning over a fence, it's not a farm fence, but has a residential house right next to it, who's gonna get hurt? Also, anybody who's involved in farming knows that farming is a dirty business, literally. The combines that's pictured there, that's corn, corn's dusty. Right now, soybeans are coming in, they're even more dusty when they are harvested. You have chemicals that have to be sprayed, or weed protection, or insecticides, and for herbicides as well, and whether we like it or not, they have a tendency to drift. So any of these ordinances that we're kinda asking about is basically to protect everybody. Hit her again, please, ma'am. One of the first things we recommend is a non-climb fence at the boundary of the property. Six foot high. Ordnances for lagoons uses no climbs, basically, you can't get your foot in, he cannot climb over it, animals cannot get into it. Chain link or a very narrow span fence is what we're kinda recommending. Continue on Debbie. We're also recommending a fifty foot setback from the property line, and I mean from the farm property line over to the residence house. Some of those, and that's one of the newest developments going on down Cincinnati Road, if you notice, those houses are already constructed, although not lived in, but I understand they haven't been able to hit onto the sewer line yet, are ten to fifteen foot away from the property line. That means basically that farmer, in order to protect themselves, can no longer run livestock there. Can it no longer go all the way to the fence or even near the property line anymore with grain crops because of the drift from the chemicals? We need something in there that will separate that. Go to the next one. This one's taking out my back door. You can see the chains for the fan control, it's on the, on the deck, over the deck. You can barely see, and we didn't expand it enough, you can barely see where there's mold grass line, that's the end of my yard. This is out in the paddock area, so I'll tell you where it's at. The land behind belongs to Whittaker Bank and is being farmed by Mayhand. They are kind enough to have a fifty foot setback. You see a mold area and then the bright green in the back is soybean crop. Bourbon County requires that, we don't. And since Mayhand does most of his farming in Bourbon County area, he's used to doing that. And so he is protecting that subdivision, but there was nothing in that subdivision that required anybody to have a fence whatsoever. This is my wife's property when we married, and there's no fence there whatsoever. Now, some people would not even be putting up with that, with me, it keeps my sanity because I'm looking at a green crop, but that's another story, I'll tell you on another day. But those are the situations, we need a uniformed, across the board, guidance system, ordinance system, and one to be really, very few exceptions made in order to protect everybody that's involved. Debbie, go again. Setback, we're looking at, say, another fence fifty foot from the property line. Now that leaves a wide easement down through there and a lot of land. But climbing over, like the kids, that fence right there is not gonna slow them down, so at least you've got two fences to go through. You've got a barrier fence right there that will help it down, spray damage coming back and forth. Say Brad's got Roundup ready alfalfa, which means he can spray Roundup to get rid of his weeds and his crop, and have a good hay crop. That drift, that person right across the fence, is gonna kill yard like crazy, anything else they're trying to grow. So we need barriers that will protect both the residents and the farmer and the farming operation. So that is another reason we're pushing all this. Keep going, Debbie. Toxic weeds or plants, we recommend nothing planted but grasses in that border. Now, you say what you do with that border, use it for utilities, use it for something else, when the subdivision, if they do buy the farm adjacent to it and wanna expand, and they keep pushing the fence back, so the land is not lost. But it's not unusual, if you put the wrong weed across the fence, that you're gonna kill animals. Hit it again. These are the common ones that we do a lot of planting with for ornamental purposes, and you see what they're poisonous. It's not uncommon for the common yew plant that we've used for shrubs in this county forever, and I've got a few on my houses in town. If a cow or horse gets that, it's as deadly as it can be. And I know of several farmers in this county who had the situation where a neighbor says, can we get real some stuff across fence? And good neighbor thing, yeah, till they realize what it was and end up with one, two or three dead animals. Buckeyes, dangerous to everything, wild cherry. Remember years ago when all the foals died? That was because of the drop of the cherry leaves, because of basically the bagworm? Cherry leaves dried is arsenic, and it's deadly as anything. So we've gotta come up with some rules on what can and cannot be planted, what can and cannot get across the fence. So we're looking at that as well. One more, Debbie. So, to get you out of here, to get you out to buying chili or going home and hiding out over the weekend or whatever you're gonna do, basically, we won't protect the farming operation, and that cost needs to be passed through the developer, and he's gonna pass it right down the road to those people who he's held property to. We need to protect the farmer, we also need to turn right around and protect those people who are moving in. So this is, by our proposal, a win-win for everybody. And so we just wanna bring this for your all's consideration, look at the ordinances when you're looking at redoing a few things, and especially if we're looking towards a five-year plan, and hopefully make the right decisions that will affect everybody. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark.
For the record, Brad Green's here.
Yeah, I know he is. Officially for us, our record, we need him.
I guess I would ask that Joe, possibly, you wanna comment to some of those? And I do have, I guess, I have a couple of my own comments.
I guess the, you know, I heard comments from the board about the double fencing before. The fifty foot setback, I mean, I, I think a buffer is needed, and we do have buffer requirements between urban development and rural development, but it's a fifteen foot with a planted buffer and a fence, it's not a six foot high fence, but, I mean, I think it's, you know, I agree with a lot of the sentiments. I think the hard part is, you know, you add a buffer on the urban side, you're going to increase costs, you know, to develop. Maybe there's some way to offset, to balance that, if you could maybe, I just, it just came to mind that, you know, if you take that area, that fifty foot or a hundred feet or whatever you come up with, say that fifty foot buffer along the rural edge, calculate the acreage in that and give a density bonus for the number of lots lost because of that extra buffer area, it would provide a kind of a, a balance in the, you know, offset the cost to the developer and provide that buffer for the, for the rural side. The double fence, that's, that's a tough one because you have that area of no man's land back there behind it. But, you know, maybe if we required the HOA to take over maintenance of that, maybe it could be, maybe the lots could extend through it, but it'd be an easement, fifty foot easement, and if that, you know, development continued beyond, onto that farm someday in the future, then that easement maybe could be vacated, and then the lots would just return to that property owner. So I'm, I'm, I think a lot of it makes sense that, you know, when we do, we do try to provide that buffer in our ordinances, but, you know, you get these really small lots like out there, that image, you know, that fifteen foot buffer is not adequate when you have two hundred lots adjoining that farm and, you know, all the plantings in there and, you know, swing sets and kids playing back there, and, I mean, there is, I mean, I think it makes, it makes sense to look at, there might be some way to kinda balance the, you know, responsibility or the impact and allow some type of maybe density bonus where they can move some of that, some of those lost lots to the interior farther away from the edge of the property. And we always try to, when we get developments, to try to increase the lot depths and sizes towards the edge of the, of the, you know, to the rural edge, get the larger lots on the USB boundary. You know, that one was, that was a difficult development that came through, it wasn't perfect for sure. So, yeah, I guess that, that would be my comment, maybe we could find a way to balance kinda the impact a little bit. But, I don't know what you all think about the, the double fence, but I don't know if the interior fence would be a privacy fence, if that is what you're thinking to, or so to spray. I mean, hopefully, it wouldn't be a lot of chemicals that, you know, drift off the farms, but, and I see just the maintenance issues with that double row, but you'd have to address that and just make it a public space of some kind. So, those are my thoughts. The, as far as the, the native species, we have that in our current ordinances. We may need to do a better job of running those final plats with those landscape buffers through soil conservation or for, you know, soil, you know, tree people, just to make sure that there's nothing we're missing, but we have those, we have a requirement for native species when, you know, when they're appropriate for the type of use that's proposed, and those species that are toxic to livestock aren't allowed. The only one I saw is that Ohio buckeye, I hadn't seen that before, I think that, that might be in our, our landscape ordinances as an allowable species, but I'll have to check on that. So I mean, I think the buffer, the buffering makes sense to me.
So I guess if we went and said it was, every measure would be fifty foot buffer, two fences and a greenery buffer as well?
Yeah, I mean, that's, well, it's, it's really a setback, fifty foot setback, but it would, I mean, I, I would think maybe just require a landscape buffer, you know, maybe you could allow utilities in it as long as it didn't, you know, affect the planting, but, yeah, fifty foot and two fence.
Maybe you need to get out, get out some of the development costs and maybe only require the setback fences, then anybody that owns a home, if they choose to put up some screening of theirs, not see that fence, so be it. I mean, I, I know as a homeowner, I wouldn't think about that as a developer, did you put in some bushes? Like, I don't mind them. And then, you know, of course, I guess you'd be educated about what they can and can't. That may be a, you know, de-restriction or HOA or something like that would be...
Yeah, yeah, that's a good comment.
But at least that would take some of the burden from the developer financially.
But the, if it was fifty foot off of the, of the farmer's property line, some of those, like you, wouldn't really be a concern because it's fifty feet away.
Yeah, but I saw, there are a gazillion species out there, you know?
You don't have to use...
Daylilies or grasses, I mean, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
You know, I think that would be the easiest side for HOA or de-re-restruction, probably. You know, I think that would just be an easy aside for HOA or de-re-restriction, probably more HOA than.
I'm, the, this commission and the staff knows that most every time one of these developments comes forward, I'm harping about leaving existing trees in place. I see no reason to, to cut down forty and fifty-year-old trees and replace them with, you know, some small sapling, and, which is well and good, but an old fence row, that's where you're going to find those wild cherries. And so they're, you know, they're already there. I think we could put in, you know, a restriction so that if developer doesn't put new ones in, which would be logical, but, you know, they're, they're native.
My only concern about a double fence is we've done a couple double fences between residents and businesses, and the problem you have there is the maintenance of that grass, and I don't know if anybody had a chance to drive over to plant a fence and look, is it overgrown?
No, it's, it's been mowed.
So somebody's mowing it.
Yeah.
What can you do to just one fence and make an eight-foot cop? To six?
I would almost rather do that than double fences, I just think double fences is such a.
Because that's going to turn the lives off, plus some drifting.
And the expense, I think you asked for the expense to be covered by the developer. Isn't a shared fence usually split fifty-fifty between the farmer and the neighbor? So I would, I, I don't think we should ever change that, I don't think we should make a developer pay for the full fence. If a farmer wants a fence and the developer's okay with it, and they can agree upon it, I think the shared cost is what's been done in the past, and I think it should, my own opinion, I don't think you should penalize a developer for developing. And, and the answer to continue that is, I don't think, and I wrote my notes down here, that we should tell a farmer what they can and can't sell, or what they can and can't subdivide. I mean, you've bought or you owned your farm, if you decided you wanted to sell it, you have that right to do that. And I know many farmers that are selling, like wildfire lately. But then there's a couple farmers that have owned farms for generations that absolutely will never, ever sell, and their kids won't sell, and the hopes are their grandkids won't sell. So I think to try to make a farmer do one or the other isn't.
Yeah, I don't think that's the question.
No, I know, I'm just saying, I just, you know.
My question would be on the, on the economic, the main thing is the economic impact and the loss of that land on the other side of the farm, where he's got that zone where he can't spray or he can't plant. So what, just pointing things out, so what if we come in here, and it's not a lot of acres, and you take fifty feet, but you're making him give up that land, well, okay, if your developer comes in and says, okay, this is what you're going to have to do, this farmer's going to have to be compensated for a ten-year average rent on that five acres if he can't farm anymore. So, if land's rented for two hundred dollars an acre, and even if it's for a lot size, that wouldn't be a lot. I mean, gosh, that wouldn't be a half a tenth of an acre. But it adds a little bit of cost to your lot size, but that, but that farmer's still getting income for that for a set number of years.
Right.
And if, and having it, if they decide, if that farmer decides to sell, well, that would somehow, you know, you will fit to add, affect their fund, or something, I don't know how to do that. But it is about the economic impact, of the loss of that land. You don't want to got a farmer right in your backyard, because so many people don't understand not to get next to cattle, there's a bull, over there, there's, you know, it's going to be a risky disaster, but it's not fair to the farmer on the side that he can't farm the animals.
Right.
You want to be safe too.
Fifty feet by, you know, half a mile fence line is.
That's a lot, that's a lot of length.
Yeah.
Yeah, but a half a mile fence, how many lots would that be?
Well, look, if you throw a hundred feet times fifty, it's over the half acre, so you're probably just want two and a fraction of houses.
So fif, you know, fifty foot width lots, so five hundred, ten, ten lots, five hundred feet every five hundred feet, so. So you're saying in lieu of the fifty, in lieu of the fifty-foot setback on the urban side, including option, or in lieu of just developer pays the farmer for loss of use of that five, fifty?
Right, and that way he doesn't have to affect his, you know, the, the developer doesn't have to affect his farm. He can still put in the lots he wants at the post fence or whatever.
Is that really common? Or is that just a, I, I don't know much of anything about that subject, about, about the process like you're describing.
Oh, I've never heard that.
Oh, okay.
It changes the world right here.
He didn't, like, oh, this was not all the time.
We'll make that the green concept.
Grass instead.
One, one thing I, we would need to do, and I don't know all the lot dimensions that we've got, but a fifty or sixty-foot lot by a hundred foot is not going to be unusual. You're talking about a third of a lot, we've got lots selling for sixty and, and on up. You could be talking about twenty grand per lot is the lost value.
So a little bit of payment to the farmer wouldn't be?
Well, it, it, you know, maybe, although that tells me, that, that sounds an awful lot like an impact fee, which we fought over years ago to get, but now that would have been not just for the agriculture, but for public utilities, you know, and that type of.
Yeah, but it would be directly proportional to the, I mean, it would.
Oh, and it would, it has to be, yeah. The requirement is it has to be proportional, it has to be spent in a certain way at a certain time, I mean, it's, it's a complicated thing. This would be a lot easier than that. But, but I think the value on the development side would really be tremendous. And not all our lots are sixty thousand, but I can't imagine, we've got many that are less than twenty or forty-five thousand. Well, you know, you're now talking eight to ten thousand dollars lost in the back of every lot, you got a two-hundred lot subdivision, I mean, that's just, that's a fortune.
Yeah.
So, I, something like that, I think would need to be done, but even with that, it makes me wonder if we don't need to fix it.
I mean, you know, there's a reason we've always said good fences make good neighbors, or something like that.
No climbs.
But, but I think we do need to go through some of our subdivisions and just see what exactly would that be? If this is what the subdivision or the, the raw land costs, and this percentage of it had to be carved out, just what would that impact be? Because we're, we're already having some pretty high-cost property. Boy, that, that, that could be an awful big blow all at one time, not to mention all the other forces that are at work, so. There's just, well, there's a whole lot of faults in that, even though I've got to admit I'd love to see it done, just, just at the buffer, so we can keep some farmland. And, but if you do, like, with the, the buffer, you can put it over on the farm side, that way if you do later decide to develop that farm, you haven't lost that fifty-foot buffer, because you're all of a sudden you've got two urban farms backing up each other.
Makes sense.
Well, it does, but you also have to have streets, dachshunds, you know, you have to have a number of things in order for that land to be useful. And if it's a different developer, what do you do? I mean, I know if Bob Holmes has this one and then buys the next, that's fine, we've got a whole bunch where the developer next door is not the same one. So then we've got to figure out a way to do it that way, to coordinate that. Not to mention the fact that we require this, we're probably going to have at least a handful of suits about condemnation, and, you know, taking property without fair compensation. So, I mean, that, that's, boy, that's a complicated, any way this goes, it, it, it's complicated.
I also don't know a lot about this, I don't know if you've seen people, but if you're paying a property tax rate, is there some way that the property taxes for that percentage of the property could be lowered or brought up?
There could probably be, it's been a long time since I've worked with property taxes. And, and for one thing, getting local governments to do anything with property taxes is almost impossible. Now, getting a break on, you'd think wouldn't be acceptable, so often they're too low to begin with in most communities, because they won't keep it up with, you know, with expenses and whatnot. But, yeah, I mean, there are ways, just like with economic development, you can get tax waivers and things. Now, what the current law is, I don't know, I've been with the law since twenty years. But there always have been ways of doing, basically, property tax breaks.
It just seems that if, if you can't get twenty-five percent of your land property, you can get a twenty-five percent discount on your property debt.
Well, of course, property taxes only take about, what is it, one dollar for a hundred, some, I mean, it's, it's almost negligible compared to the cost of buying land.
The write-off would be dropping the budget, and all of a sudden.
Yeah. I think it's still a great thing.
I mean, you know, you got to find nickels and dimes multiple places.
Might pay by the fence?
Yeah, it might be a lot easier to do twenty smaller fences than two big fences.
And, and would it be too much, too many options, if you're okay, you've got a developer that comes in, like on Cincinnati Drive, and they want to put these farms right up close to the broad lines? So, if you want to do that, then you have to compensate the farmer on the side, otherwise you can choose but a fifty-foot buffer.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's what I was saying, at first, that as an option.
As an option.
It might work better.
Fifteen a feet?
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
I mean, I thought it was twenty-five. If they've gotten various of the board.
I, I don't think they did.
I don't think they did.
I don't think they did, they probably break the rules.
If it's fifteen, it's the only one.
I didn't check.
Always done, look at.
Keith, what do you think about that?
We can live with that. Main thing, though, is this feature, the, the farming operation is having to protect them when we're in there.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, as Brad pointed out, you're killing it, that farmer, you're penalizing him, and that developer is getting all scot-free. So you're, you're actually penalizing our own farmers that have been doing this forever. So we have to have something in there to protect them.
Good thing is, we've got a couple farmers up here, Brad and Mr. Stone there.
Yeah.
Uh, Joe, what, what would be the possibility of, of setting a, a committee with me volunteering, Brad, and, and James there? With the, with the Soil Conservation District, and, and go to fiscal court and get one or two of their members, and try to work out some proposals that fiscal court would be willing to, to adapt, you know, coming from us, and.
I'll second that motion.
And that way we can work on it, I, I mean, I think the, the second and the fourth bullet point up there, you know, just says it all. We've got to protect the farmer's ability to farm, and, and also, we, you know, we, we've got to look out for, for that developer too, that we don't kill all development, so it's a, you know, it's a problem that we need to address.
Well, to Mr. Mifflin's point, I mean, we can't solve anything in one night. So to have a committee going forward with the involvement of fiscal court and, and planting and zoning.
And soil conservation.
Soil conservation, I think it could be an ongoing, living thing, so.
And maybe the.
If that is truly an ocean, I'd, I'd. Are you making a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
And I will definitely second that motion, so, because again, we could talk about this all night. But I think a committee going forward with a couple farmers, Mr. Mifflin on there, a couple other representatives, I think that'd be a great thing.
Okay, three, three planning commission members would work. Would you be willing, Mr. Stone?
All right, well, it looks like we got a volunteer, Mr. Shirley there. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Um, any other questions, comments for the good of the soil and conservation?
When's the rain barrel project coming out?
Rain barrel project is going to happen in the spring. Uh, we are going to have to pay for, for your rain barrel, we're going to have to pay for the adapters and so forth, you got to find your own barrel.
We appreciate you both coming out tonight, I mean, we appreciate.
We appreciate your time and effort.
So, before we adjourn, I do have a couple more things I want to hit on, is, there is a training October fifth in Frankfurt, Joe has sent that out, or somebody at Planning and Zoning sent it out. It's eighty dollars that the, the planning and zoning will pay for, we don't have to pay for that. But if you want to attend, it's eight to five in Frankfurt on October fifth. So reply to Joe ASAP, and, and we'll get the, the class paid for, especially if we need hours, Joe, or somebody, would you send hours that are needed? With me being here a couple, few more months, I don't think I need to do any more hours. And then, so I, keep in mind, I roll off December, so I need to find a replacement soon, probably sooner than later. The only other thing I've got before we make, or if anybody else has any questions, is, is the Bluegrass tomorrow has the ninth annual celebration of the Bluegrass, and they are honoring our mayor, Mayor Tom Prather. They've asked us to buy a table. Joe, do you have a preference of, of what we want to do? Because there's a couple different prices and tables, there's.
I would say a table of eight, if we can get eight, I know Charlie already said that he'll be on vacation, so. I mean, if we can get it, if there's interest of the board at the table.
It's, uh, oh, it's October sixth, which is a Thursday night from five-thirty to nine, if anybody wants to look at your calendar real quick. October sixth. I mean, I know I can, I can attend, for sure.
I love Tom since grade school, but I'll be out of town too.
Well, I mean, if you think we should buy a table A, it looks, it looks like the cost for a table A is a thousand dollars, and I didn't want, nor did I think I needed to make the decision by myself, I think I need a motion to pay for a table of eight. Be able to make a motion to do that, to honor Tom Prather. I need a motion to pay for table A.
It's a fundraiser too.
Oh, it is, yeah, it's a fundraiser for Bluegrass tomorrow. Again, I didn't think I was able to make that decision on my own, I figured that, we didn't need an executive board either, I figured that we could do it as a commission. So I need a motion to pay for a table A, it'd be about a thousand. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Green, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so a motion carries, you got that approval, Joe. Um, is there anything else that we need to talk about before we adjourn? And it's quarter to seven, so we did okay, all things considered. All right, we adjourn. Thank you.